Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who's interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county administrator/controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, administrator/controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives. So we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, it's life well-run.
Good morning. Today is Tuesday, June 28, 2016. It's 8:30 a.m. We will call this meeting of the Legislative and Human Resources Committee to order. First item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have anyone from the public wishing to address the committee this morning? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item number two, approval of minutes from our June 14 meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
It's a motion by Commissioner Cornike. It's our support. Support by Commissioner Steck. Questions or comments on the minutes?
Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next item, Circuit Court Performance Measurement Five Minute Update. We have Andy Vahlhammer with us this morning. Good morning, Andy.
Good morning. Thank you for having me, State Department. My name's Andy Vahlhammer. I'm the Circuit Court Administrator with the 17th Circuit. I bring greetings from Judge Johnston and the rest of the Circuit Court judges, including those probate judges assigned to the Family Division. Judge Johnston is, of course, the chief judge of the 17th Circuit. I'm here for the five-minute update on our performance measures. I'll attempt to meet that timeframe and also relate a few accomplishments that we've done related to the strategic goals and perhaps update you on a few things on the horizon. From the PM document, you can see that the judges, with the support of court staff and other members of the county, continue to be exemplary in meeting the time guidelines established by the State Court Administrative Office. It's been three or four years now where we're doing very well with that. What we started to do now is look at some interim guidelines. For instance, if they want 98 percent of the cases done in a year, then maybe 60 percent could be done in six months, that type of thing. But looking at total time to disposition rather than just do, you know, pass fail with those guidelines. Obviously, we want to resolve cases as quickly and accurately as possible. However, you know, certain due process, court rules, et cetera, require a mandated waiting period before we can move cases forward. So again, this whole thing, I believe, demonstrates an efficient use of the resources. The court also works to help provide a safe community by dealing appropriately with those who are found guilty of committing crimes. While those adult criminals are typically sent to correctional facilities, our Family Division staff is more involved with providing services to youth found responsible for criminal acts. Our recidivism rate for those youth remains low, at 7.3 percent for youth on community probation. We have several juvenile justice programs, however, five minutes would not allow me to go into all of them. Community probation is the largest program, and the hard work and expertise and competence of the staff is a major reason for the success we see. Community probation, for those who aren't aware, is not your typical probation service. Our officers are out during many non-traditional hours, meeting within the community, being that schools, families, other community members, to monitor and support the families and youth on their caseloads. The group also works alongside our detention center, obviously judges, and private agency partners. Some significant accomplishments I would like to highlight. Our Court Services Department was recognized by the Governor's Office as a best practice in pre-trial services since, I believe, the last time we met. A lot of this had to do with some evidence-based practices that they're doing as far as assessing offenders, you know, do they need to be in jail before they go to trial, et cetera, that type of thing. And I would like to single out Tim Boeheysen and his staff for that great recognition and that honor. Our core tools, there are 10 performance measures that have been identified by the National Center for State Courts as basically the ideal or best way to identify a well-run or efficient court. We track all 10. It's rare for most courts to keep track of them. We do track all 10 and publish them as well. Data sharing. I believe I shared the start of this with you the last time I presented. A lot has happened since then. But basically, data sharing agreement involve five counties, a few in southwest Michigan. And this, again, has to do with our juvenile justice programs. There's really no centralized place to get all the data. So it's hard to compare yourself to other counties and maybe to figure out best practices that other people are doing because of, you know, different types of youth that they're dealing with, et cetera. So this effort has been combined to not only have systems somewhat talk to each other when appropriate and confidentiality standards are met, but also identify if, you know, if someone's been on probation in a different county, et cetera. It's been a lot more work than I think a lot of people expected. Strictly, you know, definitions, you know, petition is a petition here, it's something else in a different county, just to make sure we're all on the same page, to make sure we're comparing apples to apples, so to speak. Another one is our automated jury system. We've made a major change to our jury system. It's an effort to be more efficient with our staff, but also friendlier and more customer service-oriented to our jurors. As you know, jurors are kind of this unique group of people that come into the court. And the only thing they did to be there was happen to live in Kent County. So we understand that it's a sacrifice and a hardship for those folks to come, but it's also necessary for us to do our job. I believe, you know, I wanted to single out Nick Little, who is our case management manager. He really took the lead in this process. There were a lot of barriers to getting it done. It's operational now. I also talked to Craig. I wanted to single out a few people at IT, but as he pointed out, a lot of people touched it. But Angie Dickinson and Tim Beck were both very helpful in dealing with the vendor to make sure, again, confidentiality standards were met. I mean, there's just a lot of technical aspects to the program that were somewhat unforeseen when we started. The system is up and running. We've gotten good reviews so far from the people that have used it. And soon, we will have the ability to distribute cash to jurors as they leave. Not yet, so don't expect it if you go to jury duty, but we do have the kiosk set up. We basically have the equipment. Now we just have to make sure it's done properly and then we can account for everything correctly. A few issues of note that I'd like to share. One is that we welcome Judge Ackert to the bench since I was last here. He was appointed to the probate court, assigned to the Family Division. He replaced Judge Quest, who was on the probate court assigned to the Family Division. The governor appointed him to the Circuit Court bench, so he's now part of the civil criminal side. And he replaced Judge Redford, who went to work for the governor last year. We will be welcoming at least two new judges in January of 2017. Judge Booth retires, and we will get an additional judge to fill the spot approved by the board earlier this year. Believe in two more years, we're going to be losing at least two more judges. So there's going to be kind of significant turnover from our bench in the coming five to seven years. Electronic file management and e-filing, this is a project that we've been working on with our specialized business docket. Since then, and somewhat expectedly, the state is looking to make e-filing mandatory. They're working on a statewide system. They've begun to raise the money by adding a filing fee to all civil filings from every court. Our process is limited to the business docket right now. It is completely planned and designed to expand to the whole court when possible. But we'll obviously kind of need to keep an eye on what the state's doing. We want to make sure that systems are compatible with each other. As I said, this was an expected thing to happen, so our process has been a little more internal, I guess, planning for the fact that, you know, once we get the documents, our process is more automated. But the actual filing of the document will happen in Lansing, so to speak. Finally, I believe last time I was here, someone asked about the specialized business docket. We have been keeping track of that. And I guess, again, in my limited time, I wanted to say that 93 cases, and these are often very complex legal cases that can take years and years, 93 percent of these complex cases have been decided within the guidelines of 240 days. I think that's earlier than the guidelines. The business docket is constantly asking for input from people. There is an advisory committee comprised of the chief judge and two attorneys appointed by the chief judge. We are developing a risk assessments tool with our juvenile justice kids or probationers that we have. Again, we look at recidivism. We measure a lot of things. However, sometimes just the type of kids that we're getting, which is what we've noticed over the past years, that maybe we're not getting as many kids, but the kids we're getting have more needs, be it mental health or other things. But a lot going on. The assessment tool is going to help us, it's a standardized tool that will help us kind of measure each kid, how we do individually with each child, and maybe even certain domains that we could either improve on or that we're doing well on. And I believe that's it. I did want to mention, I mentioned some of the efforts of IT to help us with our jury system. But there's other, a lot of collaboration that goes on in this county. I dealt with the attorney last week on something that was needed. Obviously, as Al reminds me, that we couldn't do anything without a nice building to stand in and do our operations. I do visit other courts. I'm very pleased that I'm working at the 17th Circuit. I guess that's all I'll say about that. Again, there's a lot more that I could say, but I know five minutes, I'm probably a little bit over already. So if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to attempt to answer.
Thank you, Andy. Any questions this morning for Andy? Commissioner Allen.
Thank you, Chair. Morning, Andy.
Good morning.
Great stuff. I'm amazed at all the work that you do and all the measures in here. And I did want to comment, just appreciation for several places in here where I see you're actually asking some of your customers how, whether they think about the service that they're receiving, whether it's in the speed resolution area, where there's some of that. And I saw a couple other areas. Just wanted to comment, and I'll probably be doing this more often moving forward, but comment and I guess ask for your thought. My sense, in all the years I've been associated with the county, is that we tend in departments to recognize, we do do some collaboration, but I don't know that there's enough connection between all of the entities that touch people to get the best outcomes for them. So I always want to ask whether you have any thoughts about how, as a community, we can connect things like behavioral health services, health services, housing, those kinds of things, so that as people enter this whole system, that they can come out with a more positive outcome? As opposed to Circuit Court just doing its piece, mental health just doing its piece? Any thoughts about how as a community, we could do that together better?
Well, that's a big question. I mean, I agree. I mean, obviously, we have a lot of called cross-system kids, where they're involved with, you know, Network 180, or they're involved with the Child Protective System. I mean, obviously, that goes on a lot. And again, it's another blessing to be here. I mean, we do have a lot of those meetings. I mean, we have meetings quarterly where our judges meet with, you know, where we have representatives from Network 180 and DHHS. We're all in the same room. We kind of get in front of issues. If there's problems, that's a place to discuss it. That's a rarity. We have several committees with our, again, our juvenile probation, which is a little more kind of, I guess, of our outreach, for lack of a better word. But, you know, we're actually the ones providing those services. Again, I agree. I think it can always be improved, and I think most of us are making efforts to try and do that. Some of our program, you know, wraparound is a program that we kind of get involved in, and that's kind of designed to find all, not only the public entities, but also the family supports and community supports that maybe don't get paid by the government to help them out, but also to try and bring those things together. So I think those efforts are being made, and I think that, obviously, asking the questions and looking for ways to improve is the way to do it. Again, to say that we're doing a good job, I think is accurate. However, there's always room for improvement. That doesn't mean to say we don't continue to strive to get better.
Thank you.
Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I was going to drill down that same question, inquiring a little bit about, there's so much that we're doing right here, but what are the few things that we need to work on a little bit? And you already addressed that, I guess, a little bit, and we'll continue to think about that. A little question on the ADR system report. Is that including both the case neutral evaluation and the classic mediation in your mediation reference?
Yes, I believe it is, but I'll check to be sure.
I just wondered whether there's shifting within those two, some are more successful than others, because the overall numbers seem like they're pretty flat, 60 percent.
Right. Yeah, and they have been for a while. And again, those are, they're pretty much surveyed from the people that use those services or where we get those numbers.
And my sense is that mediation is becoming more of an effective tool than the case evaluation. I just wondered if that's your experience.
Boy, I'd have to look into that further for you.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Andy this morning? All right, seeing none. Thank you so much for your update. Appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number four on the agenda, facilities management performance measurement review. And we have with us, of course, this morning, Al Jano. Good morning, Al.
Good morning. Thanks for permitting me to present a discussion on our facilities management performance measures this morning. My presentation was originally scheduled to follow Daryl's back. If you remember, on April 26th, when downtown experienced a rare electrical power loss, the Consumers Energy issued an official statement later that morning. They said that the, it was quite a brief statement. They just said the outage was caused by a raccoon who climbed into the substation. They didn't give any further word on the raccoon. As administrative services department, if it indulges me for a little bit, just before we get to performance measures, I'd like to refresh your minds, because you're oftentimes working on so many different things. I want to zero you in a little bit on facilities. So if you bear with me just a few minutes and just refresh what we do as an administrative services department. We provide comprehensive facilities management for all county-owned facilities and properties, with the exception of aeronautics, public works, parks, and the sheriff's department. But please note that we do major project work with the sheriff's department. We have facility operations responsibility for this building, the health department, its lab, clinics, and the animal shelter, the human services complex, information technology building across the street, the downtown courthouse, thank you also, Andy, and as well as the 63rd District Court, cooperative extension service, our northwest center in Sparta that we leased to Telamon, of course, 82 Ionia, and other miscellaneous county leased or owned facilities and properties and projects as they get assigned to us. In total, we manage approximately 1.3 million square feet. One neat perspective of looking at that is median home in the United States, I understand, is around 2,000 square feet. So that's like managing 650 median-sized homes. Essentially, we have the responsibility and pleasure of providing facilities for most other county departments who present their respective performance measures to you, thus permitting the health department and its clinics and animal shelter to provide immunizations to children, conduct health and environmental compliance work, and take in stray and unwanted pets and adopt them to loving homes. Our court system to be able to deliver fair and equal justice, an environment where juvenile detention hopefully fosters good behavior for the children, excuse me, for the children in the future. Friend of the court can assist as child support custodians in the other work that they do. Equalization can conduct orderly and accurate property appraisals. County clerk can process voter registrations and oversee elections, protect county court records, death, birth, and other vital records. This list could go on and on, but my point is that we need to provide some diverse and dynamic facilities for these departments to function as they need to. As a refresher, some of our recent project work includes a 63rd District Court, South Clinic, Veteran Services, bed replacement at the correctional facility with L&amp;M buildings, the Human Services Complex, and your animal shelter. But later, I'll refresh you on what you have us working on now with respect to some major projects. So let's talk about performance measures and how we do this. By "we," I mean the facilities management staff consisting, there's 30 of us, myself included, who work in harmony with the county purchasing staff, fiscal services, legal staff, and other respective departments within the county that we all serve, and so many others. We do whatever it takes to keep the lights on when they need to be on and off when they should be off. Keep the water in the pipes rather than on the floor, the rain outside, and we could use some right now. Indoor temperatures comfortable, snow and ice removed is appropriate, the windows clear, rooms set up, and on and on, whenever and wherever. In my presentation, I'd like to point out what we're going to talk about briefly. Alignment with your board priorities. I think we firmly touch on four of them, of your six key board priorities. Some key performance measurements, or metrics, rather, sorry. Significant accomplishments, some key collaborations, and a brief look ahead. We talked about the four priorities that we touched, the efficient use of resources, and that's essentially the water we use, electricity we use, and the gas we use. We use them efficiently. Safe community. We like safe facilities, not dangerous slip and falls of ice or threadbare carpet or any other safety hazards. Proactive and interactive government. Value maximizing quality and maximizing cost for long-term asset preservation, both in our normal operations and in major project work. And high quality of life to provide safe, quality, value-based facilities management The key goals and metrics that we provide for, I love this slide, because it's got so many of your landmark buildings. I'm sure you'll recognize them. If you don't get an opportunity to get to the buildings, please don't be shy. You'd be very welcomed at any of our facilities. I speak for all our respective departments, I'm sure. If you'd rather not go on your own and you want to learn just a little bit more, please connect through Pam or Daryl to connect with me, and we'll have a welcoming team for One of our key goals is to provide safe, quality, value-based facilities management services to Kent County. We believe we do that with a very reasonable cost per square foot of operating cost. It continues to inch up a little bit, but wages inch up a little bit, contractual work inches up a little bit, repair and maintenance inches up a little bit. I think we're still, naturally, we're trending quite well with others. It's complicated to measure exactly, because not everyone owns buildings, not everyone self-performs work or as much work as we do. But we've been very consistent at value-based facilities management services. Manage energy consumption, and that's also a significant accomplishment for us that we continue to be proud of, and we'll talk more about that in significant accomplishments. But essentially, for our utilities costs, the best way truly to conserve utilities costs is to conserve their use. So limiting water use, setback temperatures is appropriate and approved by you folks. Some folks may say, these could be a little cooler in here. Well, we try to strike a nice balance between keeping it warm in the winter and cool in the summer. And we're doing that quite consistently, as these measurements, I believe, point out. Our key goals and metrics for our major building projects, essentially asset preservation and build or remodel facilities to last long and maximize value of the buildings. We always strive to come in on time and within budget. I'm pleased to say that the departments that we've been working with and serving and you all have been very realistic as far as a couple things. One is your expectations as far as how much county financial resources we want to commit to everything, because as you all know, we need to balance that out across multiple needs in the county. But also timing. I remember when we were doing L&amp;M buildings, it was important for the sheriff to say, we're not so much in a rush as we want to get it right. And I don't know if those were his exact words, but that was the context of what he shared. And so when we tried to set a reasonable goal and timeframe expectation, we always knew that he was wise enough to foresee that, don't rush something, just get it right. So when we move in, we can use it. And the departments have been very understanding of that, and that helps us two ways. One is gets the project done right, and we can always say we came in on time. Talking about our significant accomplishments, our ongoing substantial energy conservation, this is just a screenshot of what our team sees when they bring up on their computers or on their cell phones even. A screenshot of, this one is of the 63rd District Court facility, the two levels. Right away, it lights up. If it's green, everything's absolutely fine within set point temperatures. A little bit cool, a little bit warm, it'll go off color. But it gives us zones, and if we get alarms during the night, the old days, somebody would have to go in. That's expensive, that's frustrating, and everything else. We can do a lot simply on a laptop or even literally on smartphones now. You just bring this up on LogMeIn app and adjust temperatures accordingly. Another couple significant accomplishments is the Veteran Service Facility at 836 Fuller. Everything I understand leads me to believe that that was the right move. I believed it at the time, and I think we're observing that from the feedback I hear from the Bets Office. The South Clinic, of course, is doing resoundingly well. All 12 chairs are in the dental clinic that's adjoining that, and it's a very, very well-utilized clinic. Another significant accomplishment that you're all very well aware of was in 2015, we did our comprehensive space need study for county facilities. our comprehensive space need study for county facilities, touched virtually every building and laid out a good plan for the future for your consideration. Some of our key collaborations, we work a lot with the city, we work a lot with the city on multiple fronts, but this building that we're in is co-joined, we share the same heart, so to speak, with respect to motor control centers with electrical switch gear, our heating and cooling systems, and we've done this now for nearly 50 years in this facility, and it's still going strong. Spectrum Health with our leasing of Kent Community Hospital, former Kent Community Hospital, now Spectrum Kent Community Fuller. Network 180 at the Fuller complex, of course, working with them. Courthouse is our co-owner and tenant at 180 Ottawa, the big downtown courthouse. State Police Lab at Fuller, we have a comprehensive facilities team over at Fuller. We assist the state lab and had a long contractual agreement for grounds care and such, and that goes back many decades. And of course, as I shared a few moments ago, on the South Clinic with MCDC and the dental clinic co-joining us in our health clinic. Brief look ahead, right now, we're in the throes, and we'll start next month with coming out of the ground or going into the ground to start, actually, with a kitchen replacement and work release entry over at the correctional facility. As you're well aware, our juvenile detention replacement of AB and C units is underway. That's essentially a three-year project, a year of architectural engineering work and then two years of construction, very complex project. It's a $20 million project, and it's necessary, as you know, and that's certainly why you believe it was unanimously approved, that project. If I'm wrong on that, I'm sorry. Courthouse, built out as Administrator Tholmhammer shared, a build out of courtrooms over at the courthouse at 180 for Circuit Court. And up in the air still right now with exactly what's going on at 82 Ionia, our space need study indicated that we have excess capacity over there. Perhaps the location isn't ideal, and the layout of the building might not be ideal, and some of the departments need a little remodel, well, or substantial remodel work. So perhaps for consideration would be in the future, a new right-sized office building, perhaps at the Fuller complex. I'd be more than happy to entertain any questions, or I can start with each building and talk in depth about that, and I'd be happy to do that, too, if I might.
Well, thank you, Al, for your presentation this morning. Do you have questions from the committee? Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair.
Good morning, Al. Just a comment, actually. First of all, I really appreciate your enthusiasm for your job.
There's 29 others right behind you.
I understand that, but you are the spokesperson for that group, and I know you take a lot of pride in what you do. And it's kind of, it can be thankless work, because I kind of look at this as like, you know, professional baseball or football. They say referees or umpires are doing a good job when you don't notice them, and a lot of times, you walk through these buildings, including this one, it's an older building, and they're always, they seem to be spotless, and you don't notice any condition issues. It's always clean, well-run, obviously, you're working really hard on keeping the cost down with electrical and all that kind of stuff. I just really appreciate that. And, you know, you kind of treat this county infrastructure like I sense you'd probably treat your own home, you know, keep the cost down and keep it efficient, and I, for one, would like to thank you for that.
Well, you took the words right out of my mind when you shared about the example of the baseball umpires, because our team, when things aren't noticed, that's really good for us. We want to stay off the radar, we want to be proactive, and those are some of the nicest things I've ever heard, so thank you very, very much.
Commissioner Hennessy.
The Parks Department and having a central office, is that a part of this look ahead as well?
It's part of the look ahead, and that's a frustration for many of us. You know, they do have a centralized headquarters, but I'm sure you've been there, and I need to elaborate, but that was an approved project right in the middle of recession time. It was in advance of recession, and then when recession came, those funds were needed for a more higher priority, and certainly, that's on the fringe of the radar, it's simply funding priorities. We're happy to do it, but it's a funding priority that's up to you all. Thank you.
Are there questions or comments for Al this morning? Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. Also, I'd say that I appreciate all the good work, and I'm always proud of every county building that we have, because they show us well.
You make, you folks make my day, thank you. Year, actually.
What, on 82 Ionia, just a little more drill down on that, are we still in negotiation phases in that? Is that where that is?
I'm sorry, I didn't elaborate on that more. In January, the folks from Ferris slash Kendall had met with us and shared that they really, really wanted to buy the building, but their initial plan for the building wasn't going to work out the further they studied it and worked into engineering before we could formalize a buy-sell agreement. And they asked for some more time, and I know they've put substantial resources, both time and financial resources into seeing how they could best use that building. You know, if you look at what they own to the north, and you look at what they own just the other side with UCIA or UICA, thank you, you could see why they'd want that real estate. In order to use the building effectively, the numbers needed to work for them, they asked for four to six months. They're expected to get back with us in July, and then we'll learn where they desire to go from there, or maybe they desire to not go from there. So we should learn about that in July, I'm sorry to share that.
That's fine, thank you. Curious about that. One other, if I might, one other follow-up. At Network 180, those of us that sit on the board, we're in the process, as you know, looking for some alternative space. I'm just curious about the role of your department in working with the authority, whether it's Network 180 or others. It strikes me that you have this whole spectrum of high-quality, very experienced, capable facilities, folks, and we kind of invented or at least trying to plot along. What is your role when it comes to the authorities such as Network 180?
Commissioner Mast, if I may share, had asked me when Network 180 was looking earlier this year, they had an opportunity for a facility for consideration, and, well, let me back up quickly from there. There's a, whenever Network 180 needs something, of course, myself or our staff at the Fuller complex always helps, and they reciprocate, they help us from time to time, too, on some things when they can. But with regard to major projects or major space or major build-outs, we certainly have helped them whenever they ask in such, I don't want to get into somebody else's sock drawer, so I don't tell them what to do, but I merely lay out some suggestions, and they've taken some of those suggestions, and it's helped them to get to where they are over the years. I'd like to think that I've helped in that. But I had substantial input on their review of that facility, and they're doing a remodel to shift for some room in there, and I was involved in assisting where I could with the architect and engineers on that, and we try to help them.
And you have done that, I have no question about that. I guess I'm wondering a little more systemically, and maybe it's up to us to determine whether or not we don't, if the authorities give you the responsibility, retain that responsibility to manage the facilities with your department, because I think essentially, Network 180, for example, runs it separately. We certainly draw upon your expertise, but it's really completely separate from what you do.
That could be a discussion. As, that could be a discussion, we certainly don't have available and resources to just manage their facility for them.
Well, not for free, but you know, we'd have to.
Well, not just free, but certainly, that could, it's something that could be for discussion.
Commissioner Mast.
Well, I was just going to follow up with your work on, I think, childhood, how was that coming? I think one of our first projects that we've authorized to move ahead on is the replacement of that building?
No, I think you.
With the detention facility.
Yeah, juvenile detention facility. We've selected the architect and architectural and engineering team. Tomorrow is, well, we've had an initial kickoff meeting with juvenile detention and the 17th Circuit Court Administrator's Office, and we had that just a couple of weeks ago. Our programming, first programming meeting is tomorrow afternoon and Thursday afternoon, and as I shared, it's about a year for architects and engineers to do their programming work in two years of construction. DLZ with substantial resources in the Midwest, and detention and corrections experience is the architectural and engineering team for that project.
Mr. Talon.
Thank you, Chair. I'll add my appreciation for the amazing condition of our facilities in Kent County, and just express one ongoing frustration with how we look at our energy use, and that's, and the performance measure here is a cost of utilities per square feet of building just tells me so little about our consumption of energy to operate our buildings. And, you know, I've asked for this before, but amount of fuel, electric, gas, per heating degree day makes a lot more sense to me and is something that, I mean, that we have control over what that cost is as opposed to dollars, which we have very little control over. It tells us more, I think, so just want to encourage you to keep looking at going that direction. So we really know how, whether we're reducing our energy consumption as opposed to cost, because we don't have control over the cost totally, but we do have control over the consumption.
To that point, Commissioner, for years, it's been on Access Kent, and we have taken into consideration degree days and such for a multitude of buildings. That automated control system where I shared that neat-looking picture, that generates a wealth of information for us and taking into consideration degree days. So a lot of that information is available on Access Kent. I haven't looked lately to see exactly where it's at on there, but that's there. And then also, please know that when we try to conserve energy, and we do that mostly through our automated control systems, if you try to dial back the temperature, I'm not picking on the court, because I think they have 100% legitimate concern, as an example, there's a lot of tension in the court. So when we set office temperatures at 74 degrees, the court might say, "We need to be at 72 degrees." Of course, sometimes that's coming from the judge of where he would not his courtroom at or her courtroom at, but they're in clothes and a robe, understand, but I think actually, quite honestly, so I'm not picking on the judge, I'm really not, there is tension, there's a defendant, there's family and such like that. That costs money to do that. As we open our doors for longer hours at our South Clinic than what we used to have when we had our smaller clinic in Kentwood, we're open longer, we're using more energy. So we can, yeah, but I appreciate that, and we'll continue to review and see that that information is updated with respect to degree days, Commissioner. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Al this morning? All right, Al, thank you so much. Just want to reiterate with several of my colleagues already, so I just really appreciate your hard work, and I believe Andy Tholmhammer just mentioned it right when he left, but without the facilities to provide the services, we can't do our jobs in serving the citizens of this county and our constituents. So really appreciate all your hard work and.
Well, the support that our team receives from you, from the Administrator's Office, and equally important, virtually every department we serve, we get tremendous support from, is very kind, very much appreciated, and I speak for all of us on our team. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Okay, item number five on our agenda from the Board of Commissioners, authorize ballot proposal to increase the county-based 911 surcharge by 70 cents per month.
This is a request to recommend to the Board to authorize the placement of a proposition on the November 8, 2016 general election ballot to increase the county-based 911 surcharge by 70 cents per month to $1.15 per month per device effective July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2036. County is dedicated to providing residents and first responders to protect them with highly professional, well-coordinated public safety services and an equitable funding structure to ensure fairness throughout local units. Since 2008, the county has levied a 45 cent per month surcharge on all telecommunications devices capable of accessing 911 services with a billable address in the county. The collected user fee is distributed by the Kent County Dispatch Authority to Kent County and the City of Grand Rapids Public Safety Answering Points to cover a portion of operating costs, with the Dispatch Authority retaining some funds to cover its operations and a portion of capital costs. The Dispatch Authority, City of Grand Rapids, local units of government, and the county have aging equipment and will need to upgrade to an 800 megahertz system and other technology enhancements in order to ensure future interoperability and provide the best quality public service to our community. Effective July 1, 2016, the Sheriff's Department will be dispatching for police and fire services for all communities with the exception of the City of Grand Rapids. Historically, there have been differing opinions about what is equitable in terms of funding for fire dispatch. In 2015, the county and local units for which it provides fire service dispatch adopted a short-term cost-sharing methodology which expires December 31, 2017. Through research and discussion, it has been determined that an additional surcharge of 70 cents would be needed to address technology improvements and establish enough operational revenue to cover costs associated with the county's fire dispatch services and provide similar funding for the City of Grand Rapids Fire Dispatch operations. The additional 70 cents per device per month surcharge is expected to generate approximately $4.5 million annually. This request was recommended to be placed on the November 2016 general election ballot by the Millet Subcommittee, which include Commissioners Corndyke, Breevy, Hennessy, Vonk, and Voorhees. This item was also recommended for approval by the Finance and Physical Resources Committee at its last meeting.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll move it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Vonk, sub- by Commissioner Hennessy. Questions or comments on the motion?
For the health.
Oh, Commissioner Vonk, please.
Gunhold to get air and comment on this for the health and welfare of our residents and moving in the right direction. I know probably it was about 10 years ago in Plainfield Township, there was an accident on the expressway in Midwinter, and our fire chief responded with first responders there, and when the cloud lifted, there was 100 vehicles there, and it ended up that there was probably six, eight, 10 agencies that reported to the accident scene, and they're all surprised by the number of vehicles, there were 100 vehicles in that accident, and those kind of situations, that was an uncoordinated response to a major accident, and today, we'd do that a lot better, I'm sure. And for the future, we'll do it better yet, and providing safety for the residents of Kent County and protection of that safety, so.
Good, great, thank you. Additional questions, comments? Mr. Mast.
Well, I just want to, we've got in front of us a communication from Grand Rapids Chamber of Commerce, and that's very welcome, that's helpful, and I just wonder if the representative wants to say anything more about this, or just let us put this into the record, I guess. Okay, thank you.
We can add it to the record. We had public comment at the beginning, and that was kind of their chance to get up and say something.
That's correct, I understand. So, okay, that's helpful to have, so thank you very much, chamber.
Pass it back to your chamber board.
Okay, Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Just a comment, I think, you know, running the sheriff's department, the corrections dispatch, all that's, it's pretty expensive, but it's also very critical. I would think if you were to go out and call people, you know, they want to make sure that we're safe, and we do everything we can do to keep people safe, and obviously, communications, especially nowadays, is just so important. But a lot of this is, it's. But a lot of this is, it's complicated, and we have to have a certain amount of trust in not only the sheriff and his department, but our administration, that we're doing everything we can do to keep this as cost-effective as possible, to go after any money that might be out there that, right now, is questionable. But we need to move this forward first, and then still pursue anything we can legislatively. However, whatever pressure we put, I don't want to forget that component. We are relying on telecommunications companies to be honest and forthcoming, and personally, I don't have a real good sense that that's happening, because it's pretty convoluted, this process of getting the information. So, I am supporting this 100%, because, like I say, it's very critical that we have this. And a lot of these issues are way above my pay grade, so you have to trust the people that are in charge, and I do, so, thank you.
Thank you for those comments. And as you know, the surcharge transparency is at the top of our list of legislative parties, so we will continue to push that forward. But as you mentioned, this is very timely that we move forward on this now, we can't wait for that, but we'll continue to move that forward. Commissioner Hennessy?
This is another opportunity where the voters will decide in November on approving this surcharge. And it's a surcharge, not a millage proposal, that is going to them. And it really is for public safety, and it's to give us the communications platform, the coordination to, you know, to keep us up to date in terms of how we handle the emergency dispatch services. And it has been a process over a number of years. As Commissioner Vonk said, there were problems in years past, and we've been incrementally improving the system over these years. And the proposal that we're acting on today to put this into the vote was not the one that we started off with. This has received significant discussion, modifications, really tough consideration in terms of what's going to handle the technology, what's going to handle the communications system, what gives us the platform going forward. And Commissioner Corndyke led the committee, and it was a very effective process in terms of reviewing this, so that we have the proposal we have today.
Thank you for those comments. Any other first comments? Commissioner Talon?
Question, and I apologize if I'm struggling so mightily with this, but I'm still trying to understand, I keep getting a clearer and clearer picture, I'm not quite there yet about the hardware slash technology piece as it involves the City of Grand Rapids. I recognize a piece go, for fire dispatch goes there into the county. But if we're looking at some point at potential consolidation, one system, are we looking here at a separate 800 system for the city and a separate one? Can somebody help me with how that works? Because it's just not-
I'd have to refer to Larry, but we're looking at one system of technology. It's not gonna, you know, we're gonna have two separate PSAPs, but it's gonna be everyone on the same system.
Okay.
And the funding is for both the city and the county's technology upgrades for this system. And actually, this will be part of the larger system that's in the state.
So, could you almost say that it's kind of like there's one system of equipment, and over in this room, all the non-city calls go to, and the room right next door, all the city calls go to? Is that in essence what we've got happening here?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks for helping with my-
That was easy.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Commissioner Steck?
Thank you, Chair. Well, clearly, we are at a point where we have to make a change with our funding systems changing or lapsing. Technology's become, excuse me, technology is becoming outdated. It seems to me that a number of us might do this a little differently, whether we stretch the costs too far or too little, or haven't picked up all the features that we think should be here. It is a start, and it's a critical start, so I am supporting this. I think we need to be on with it and get this done, and then continue to do the work to alter it up for the best system we can.
Okay, Commissioner Bolter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a very important issue, obviously. It's 911. I think when our constituents call, they expect fast and efficient service. Obviously, we need to upgrade this technology. I wish it would have been done years ago, but I think this is one of our most important roles, is to make sure that we are doing everything to ensure the safety of our districts and of our constituents. I want to acknowledge all the work that's been done through this process. I don't want to forget the fact that we've consolidated and consolidated, I think, from 12 or 13 down to two facilities, which is big. And part of the reason I do want to support this is because I would like to see continued consolidation and efficiency. I also am supporting this measure because it's my understanding we will save a considerable amount of taxpayer dollars with this effort in terms of the discount for the technology. I think it's around $6 million. And additionally, I have concerns about the dark area in my district and would like to see that remedied very soon. So, with all of that, I want to acknowledge Chairman Saalfeld for all of his work and the Grand Rapids Chamber for all their work, and we'll be supporting this measure. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Additional questions, comments? Commissioner Vonk?
Thank you, Chair. Just a comment, people always wonder what they're getting for their money, and whether they get 12 towers over a five-year period and several thousand radios. And so, that's the piece that, you know, the resident should know what they're getting for their money, what that extra 70 cents is going to provide for them in this new technology. So, there's the, one of the pieces, I know, and the sheriff could speak to that better than I could, but that's the important part, to make this whole thing work.
Commissioner Talon?
Just a little story I feel compelled to share in this context. I, last night, for whatever reason, stopped by my former next-door neighbor of 40 years, who, over the years, I've spent lots of time on his front porch sharing stories and solving the world's problems. And hadn't seen him a long time, stopped there last night. He's not in great health, I don't know how long he'll be with us, has an oxygen tube leading from the porch into the house. And in the conversation, I said, you know, you know, he always gives me a rough time about me being involved in government. And I said, you know, we've got a ballot thing coming up about funding 911 services. And he says, "Oh, 911, I don't need that, nobody needs that, I'm not paying for that." And he says, "I never use it." And his wife was sitting there. And his dear wife reminded him that just four weeks ago, she couldn't wake him up. She called 911. If she hadn't been able to do that, he wouldn't be with us. This is important, as many have said, but I think those stories help bring that home and hopefully can bring it home to the citizens of this county. So, thanks for letting me share that.
Thank you for that story. Any other questions or comments on the motion?
Well, I'd like to say a few things. First of all, I want to thank Sheriff Stelma and his staff in particular, Michelle Young, who's been a total rock star in all of these meetings, answering all the questions, all the work that she does with the Dispatch Authority. Every time we have a meeting, I learn something new because of just the wealth of knowledge and information that she has available to her. Matt Groshur, Randy DeBryan, who's here, of course, Daryl, Tom Dempsey, Nathan Kirk and Mary Swanson, just all the staff in general. We've had just so many meetings about this, and all the spreadsheets and charts that you've put together, all the Q and A sessions, that you've patiently answered all of those questions that we've brought to you. Really appreciate everything that you've done so that we can get to this point today. I want to thank, of course, the Millage Subcommittee, Dan Corndyke for chairing that, Commissioner Hennessy, Commissioner Breevy, Vonk, and Voorhees. I've sat on the Millage Subcommittee, I'm sure most of you have as well. That's always a tough one to be on, because really, at the end of the day, you're talking about raising some type of tax, and so that's always a challenging issue, and you want to make sure that you're approaching that with all the information into your fingertips so that you can make the right decision. Chair Saalfeld, sitting in the back, he's helped to shepherd this through the process, and all of his leadership, really appreciate that, making sure that we have a chance to answer all of the questions that we have in all the various work sessions, communicating the importance of this issue to several different shareholders in the chamber, of course, thank you for your support. You've got all your information right there at your table as well. Appreciate them being at several of those meetings as well, and asking some really tough questions so that we can flesh this out better, make sure that we have a good proposal that we're talking about today. I also want to thank everybody here, just this body, you know, we've had a lot of really complex issues over the past several years, and I really appreciate the fact that we don't always necessarily agree on everything, but when we have these conversations, we're able to have them in a respectful and civilized manner, and I think that's what our constituents expect from us, and I just really appreciate that and appreciate being the spokesperson, I guess, as your chair here. You know, as Chair Saalfeld has said repeatedly, this is probably one of the most complex issues that we've been involved in in the past several years, and we've discussed a lot of those nuances today and in several of our work sessions leading up to this conversation, but I think we've kind of touched on it. This is actually really, really simple. The surcharge increase will allow the citizens of our county to have more timely and official, efficient access to emergency services when they need it, like Commissioner Talon just mentioned. It's a core function of local government. You know, we deal with a lot of media issues when we get together, but seldom are we actually talking about matters of life and death, and you just really touched on that perfectly with your story of your neighbor. So, this is one of those times we're talking about life and death here. So, you know, we're a leader in a lot of areas as a county, but as far as the technology is concerned, we're just not quite there yet. But this proposal is going to give us the chance to make that leap and to continue to provide our services to our citizens like they expect. It also brings equity to the process of funding for fire dispatch, which we know has long been an issue for local governments. So, under this proposal, all the townships and cities utilize our system will be finally under one plan. So, anyway, thanks to all of you for your contributions to this. Obviously, I support it, it's been a pleasure to work with you on all of this. So, with all that being said, we'll go ahead and call this to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And pose the same sign. Okay, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Next up on the agenda, Commissioner Misslanias, item number six. Any Commissioner Misslanias? Commissioner Antor?
Real quickly, you mentioned Michelle Young, and I forgot to mention her, and I wanted to, because she will go out and do things, it's never an easy job when she's got to go explain raising people's costs throughout the townships and villages and so forth. She's always my go-to person, because I didn't always understand it, I'd call her up, and she's, I'd be more than happy to. And she's always had that attitude, and I really appreciate it, Sheriff, let her know. You know, not everybody wants to jump into the fray like that and take a lot of hits, and she's always the point person on it, and I just really appreciate her professionalism.
Couldn't agree more. Thank you. Other question, or, and other Commissioner Misslanias this morning?
Nope, seeing none. Well, I do want to wish everyone a happy Fourth of July coming up on Monday, and I also want to mention, I think we all had at our table a printout from Public Affairs Associates regarding updates from our lobbyists, so I just want to bring your attention to that as you're sifting through all your material. Commissioner Mast?
I just want to, you know, highlight the revenue sharing that now is 100% full funding, and this is the third year, I think, it's set in here. You know, many years ago, some years ago, when I was on the Michigan Association of Counties Board, we worked out an agreement with Governor Granholz's administration to kind of pull that back and do a different way of that, and I think, at least I felt a fair amount of disgruntlement that our county, that our national, that our state county board sort of worked this out with them. But I'm glad to see that for the third year, it's back to 100% funding, because I think a lot of people thought that wasn't going to happen, but it is happening, and I just want to, I feel good about that, that we were able to help the state sort of through its crisis, and now we're back to 100% funding.
Absolutely. Other Commissioner Misslanias this morning? Okay, seeing none, we'll call this meeting adjourned to our next meeting on July 12. Thank you.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
Ami Kent County.
Somos Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.